I'd like to call this December 9th, 2021 Board of Education meeting to order. Mr. Anagnostu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Saweet?
Here.
Mr. Kropinski?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Mrs. Hauser?
Here.
We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda, we remind ourselves of our district goals. Our district goals remain academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And in lieu of a highlight or showcase of that, I think our board meeting will speak for itself on all of those goals and how we accomplish them. Next on the agenda is public comment. I do not have any slips. Is there anyone who wishes? You can give the slip to George. And then your name and address, and you have approximately three minutes.
My name is Heather Klopman. My address is 8680 Ashwood Drive in Strongsville. I'm here today to talk about an investigation that was done at the high school that I feel was handled very poorly. My daughter came to the principal with a complaint about a teacher on a Wednesday morning. I was told an investigation was going to be started, and the teacher was not removed from the school until Friday. The complaints were about him being inappropriate with her along with other students. That was my first concern, that he was not immediately removed pending this investigation. He was able to remain at the school. And then I was not given any information about this investigation. I had to, I was told that he was back at the school. Nothing was ever said to me that the investigation was completed, no details given to me, nothing. I had to reach out to the principal, who gave me no information. I reached out to Mr. Reiba, who then deferred me to the Assistant Superintendent, who did give me some information. I was still not given any explanation as to what his disciplinary action was. I was very confused as to why he was just back at the school. And in the explanation that was given to me, I was told that he had not had any prior complaints against him, which I have since found out was not true, and brought that to their attention. I was told that they were not able to take multiple girls' complaints into consideration because it was his word against theirs. So therein lies another problem, that our girls are coming to the school telling them that something is happening in private, and if he denies it, then their word means nothing. And that's exactly how these girls are feeling. I was then told that the punishment he had, I was assured that it was very serious. And I put in a request for the public record for the investigation and found out that he received one day without pay, which was taken out of the two days that he was off for the investigation right before Thanksgiving break and returned immediately afterwards. And again, the two days he was off was three days after we had made the complaint, including the day of. I also have a problem with the fact that there's a zero tolerance policy that's told to our students for being inappropriate, bullying, things like that. And it's become very clear in this situation that that doesn't pertain to the teachers. So I really wanted to bring it to your attention, because as much as I have tried, I have gotten no help from anyone at the school in regards to this. My daughter is removed from the class, is now, she spent for a few days sitting in the office during that period and is now in a study hall. But you know, she is, it's almost like she's being punished. She feels like her voice isn't heard. So I'm here to advocate for her as well as all the other girls that came forward.
So Mrs. Klopman, I want you to understand that we take this very seriously, and I can appreciate the concern you have.
Uh huh.
We will respond. I don't know if now is the time, but we will respond. The entire board and the administration wants to make sure your daughter feels heard, feels safe, and we will respond. And I appreciate you bringing it to our attention.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is recognitions. Dr. Reiba.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Well, it's a little bit of sadness that we recognize our next two people for their service, whether it be very short or for a longer duration. For Sheri and John, just want to thank you personally for your friendship, for your service, for the work that you've done on behalf of the community during your time as superintendent, obviously, and many other positions that added value to our district and as your time, and stepping up in a time of need to help us as we went through this period of time with the board opening. So John, just wanted to say personally, thank you. It was wonderful to reconnect in this new role. I have many years of you telling me what to do, so this was just more a continuation of that. So I truly enjoyed our time and your expertise and your friendship over the last few months as you stepped in as a board member. And Sheri, it's just been an absolute joy. I am gonna miss our Friday morning weekly calls. I don't know how much board business we talked about, but we sure talked about a lot of other stuff throughout the years that we've got to know each other. And you know, you came onto the board in a time where, you know, kind of question, why would somebody want to step up and be a board member in the middle of a pandemic? But you did that, and you did that with grace and thought and reflection and a passion for what's in the best interest of the kids of our district. And I'm better for knowing both of you and for you both being on the board. And I just want to say to Brian and Diane, thanks for sharing them with us for this period of time. We know that this is not just an additional responsibility on the board members, but additional responsibility on the families. So appreciate that. And you know, we have a small token of our appreciation, the plaques that, you know, we've put together for you. And at this time, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Mayor Tom Percyak to come to the podium and share recognition as well.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to be here. And we have a little proclamation. So Sheri, how about you coming up here and sharing this with us so that... Is Brian here? Come on up, Brian. I was looking for you. I said to Jimmy Carboni, I says, is Brian here? And we were looking.
Card behind you.
Yeah. No, we need, no, no, get next to your money. Okay, it says, "From the office of the mayor, proclamation, whereas I, Thomas Percyak, mayor of the city of Strongsville, along with all the members of city council, want to extend our appreciation to Sheri Buckner-Salee for her time as a member of the Strongsville Board of Education. And whereas Sheri was appointed to the Strongsville School Board in June of 2020 to fill a vacant seat. And whereas during her time on the board, she has served on the Finance Committee and the Facilities Committee. She has reported on legislation and most recently served as liaison to the Strongsville City Council. Sheri also worked on the 2021 Renewal Levy Campaign, which was passed for the first time it appeared on the ballot. And whereas Sheri, who is the CPA, one of my own beancomers, earned her Bachelor of Arts in Accounting from Baldwin Wallace University and her Master's of Business Administration from Cleveland State. She's the owner of Sidby Enterprises LLC and is also an adjunct professor at Lorraine Community College in the Engineering Department..." How does that all come together? "...Business and Information Technologies Division. Whereas Sheri and her husband Brian have been residents of Strongsville for 25 years, both of their daughters, Sidney and Shelby, attended Strongsville City Schools and graduated from Strongsville High School. Now therefore, I, Thomas Percyak, do hereby proclaim December 9th today as a day of recognition for Sheri Buckner-Salee in the city of Strongsville, and do hereby recognize her efforts and accomplishments as a member of the Strongsville School Board. We wish you health, happiness, and success in the future. All the best to you. God bless. Thank you for your work. Thank you for your dedication. And thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
Brian, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now the next one, we know this guy. Come on up, John. Diane, I know you're here. Come on up. Look at that, after almost all those years, still holding hands, I'll tell you. Fifty-three? Wow, that deserves a round of applause. Now, John, did you actually tell him what to do all the time?
No.
No?
No.
Or did he tell you what to do?
Often. Actually, a great counsel. You always hire, you always work with people that are smarter than yourself.
Well, that's what I always do.
So did I.
Well, now, look at the two of us.
I learned from the best.
Yeah. The two of us come from the same area, buddy. Let's start. It says again, "Whereas I, Thomas Percyak, mayor of the city of Strongsville," and I can get into all that with you, "but whereas John was appointed to the Strongsville School Board in September of 2021 to fill a vacant seat." I didn't quite understand that, but I thought to myself, this guy didn't get enough. So he came back for an additional duty, because I remember your days yet from St. Albert, great.
Yes.
When we were still there. And whereas during this time on the school board, he served on the Finance Committee and the Business Advisory Committee and served as liaison to the OSBA Student Achievement. And whereas John, this guy here, who began his career in education in 1968, that says a lot about the two of us.
Yes, it does.
Has served as a teacher and principal in both the parochial school system and the public school system. And whereas in 1998, John started with the Strongsville City Schools as a principal in this very building here, Zeller School, and then principal of Kinsener Elementary School. He then became Director of Human Resources, Mrs. Pelkow, you know what that's like, and moved to Assistant Superintendent, again, Mrs. Pelkow, you know what it looks like, and held the position of Superintendent of the Strongsville City Schools. Dr. Cameron, what do you think? Whereas John and his wife Diane, who is here with us today, have been residents of the city of Strongsville for 24 years. You got them beat by one year, Sheri. They are the proud parents of Joelle and Todd and enjoy spending time with their grandchildren, Megan, Caitlin, Sammy, Ashley, and John. John named after you?
Yes, he did.
Okay. Now therefore, I, Thomas Percyak, do hereby proclaim today, December 9th, as a day of recognition for John Kropinski here in the city of Strongsville. John, Diane.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your time and being here. We appreciate it. So on behalf of the school board, I also want to congratulate and thank John and Sheri for their service. When Sheri joined us on the board, you know, she talked about, you know, I want to do this, I'm interested in doing this, and I want to be able to contribute, but it's going to be a learning curve. And one of the things that I think as a board, we all appreciate it, is how she set the standard and was the model for signing up for seminars, for getting the books, for reading, and asking the questions. And sometimes, as a board member, the most important thing we do is simply ask the correct questions, ask the intelligent questions. And Sheri, you always did that, and you did that very well. And then John, I just, you know, everyone knows your history with the district, and I kind of look at it as the cherry on the sundae. And I appreciate the, although it was short, it was impactful, because you came in and you hit the ground running, and you were able to contribute, and you were able to remind us what we're doing. And there was no gap, there was no step or missed step. So it was very much appreciated. Neither of you are off the hook. We still have lots of committees. We still have the ability for both of you to contribute to the betterment of the district, and that invitation's for the whole community. But we do appreciate your time on the board and congratulations. Back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. So continuing on, we do have a series of outstanding recognitions for our fall athletes. So I'm going to turn it over to High School Principal, Mr. Bill Wengler, to kick this set of recognitions off. Bill?
Good evening. So this is, this is actually one of my favorite parts about the job, is honoring, whether it's National Honor Society, whatever it is I get to go to where I get to see Strongsville students do amazing things. And tonight, we have three athletes who are going to be honored, and two in cross-country, which is a sport near and dear to my heart, because my kids have been in the sport for a long time. And I know, if you drive by Bonnie Park in early June and you see kids running in the heat, there's a lot that goes in. People, people always think running is just running. You just go run, just go out there, we'll see you later. It's a little more complex than that, requires a tremendous amount of hard work. The third athlete is a golfer, and I won't pretend to know anything about that or be any good at that. But I do know that all of the athletes here tonight have done one thing, is they've worked extraordinarily hard. You can't be good at sports unless you're a really good person who works hard, which is why so many of our athletic teams have really high GPAs. So I'm going to hand it over, first off, to the girls' cross-country coach, Mr. John Saroni.
Julia, come on up.
Good evening, board members of the Strongsville City Schools, Dr. Reiba, Mrs. Pelkow, distinguished guests and constituents of Strongsville. I stand here tonight to present Julia Shima, three-time state qualifier for cross-country from Strongsville High School. The late General Colin Powell wrote, "Whenever you start, give it your best. The opportunities are there to be anything you want to be. But wanting to be someone isn't enough. Dreaming about it isn't enough. Thinking about it isn't enough. You've got to study for it, work for it, fight for it with all your heart and soul, because nobody is going to hand it to you." These words are a perfect reflection of the accomplishments that Julia made this year in cross-country. It is a very daunting task to become an individual qualifier to the state championship once, but three times speaks volumes of the resiliency and commitment that Julia displays. Julia is the fifth girl in the distinguished history of Strongsville Girls' Cross Country to qualify to the state meet three times. She is the third runner to be named All Ohio at the state meet twice from Strongsville High School. Throughout the season, Julia was consistently in the top five runners of every invitational this year, earning Greater Cleveland Conference All-Conference Runner, fourth at the district meet to earn an individual qualifier and team qualifier to the regional championship meet, fourth at the regional championships, earning another trip to the state championship, and finishing 26 out of 183 runners at the state championship, only missing the junior record for the fastest runner in the history of Strongsville Girls' Cross Country by six seconds. She already has the school record for the 5K as well as the fastest freshman and sophomore times in school history. Her journey is not through. Julia has one more year of cross-country to make it her best one yet. Julia, we as coaches are able to go to places because of you. As Dr. Seuss so succinctly wrote, "You have brains in your head, you have feet in your shoes, you can steer yourself any direction you choose. You're on your own, and you know what you know, and you are the one who will decide where to go." Congratulations, Julia.
For our next athlete, I'm going to call up the boys' cross-country coach, Mr. Lou Stiles.
Good evening, everyone. At the beginning of the season, we set some lofty goals, John and I. And after finishing 91st at the regional meet last year, he went on to be 31st this year, earning him his first trip to the state meet. We finished 68th in the state. It was an incredible performance. John embodies what we try to do here at Strongsville. He's a good leader, from the younger guys all the way through to his fellow seniors. And I'm excited to see what he does on the track this year.
And last but not least, our boys' golf coach, Mr. Steve King.
It's always tough following Coach Saroni. All right, before I recognize Dean, I would like to recognize his parents. His dad is his personal coach, and his mom takes him almost to all of his tournaments and watches him and keeps stats for every round that he plays. I believe that they have a scorecard for every tournament round that he has somewhere at home, right? Dean has just completed his sophomore year of golf at the high school. Over the summer, he earned the NOPGA Player of the Year honors. He played in 21 events. In those events, he won nine and had top three finishes in nine other events. So out of 18, 18 out of 21 events, he was in the top three over the summer. The other three events, he was in the top 10. So all 21 events, he finished in the top 10 at an NOPGA event. Over the summer, he averaged 76, with a low round of 69 at Chipwall Golf Course. He earned 4,370 points, in which is the largest point total ever in the tour history. He had 41 birdies, which was the most of any player this year. During his sophomore year of school golf season, he won five events. Again, he shot 69 at the Wash and Vite, which is one off the school record. He was a sectional champion with a 71 at Greyhawk Golf Course, here in First Team All-Conference and First Team All-District. To say the future is bright for Dean is an understatement. I look forward to having a front row seat to see his progress. And like I said, he's going to have more exposure this summer, playing in a lot better of your events, and I'm looking forward to see what happens with that. Congratulations, Dean.
Well, I just want to, again, on behalf of the board, take the opportunity to thank the parents. The time, the commitment, the love that you show, obviously bears fruit. I'm very fond of saying that we know you're proud of them, but we want you to know that we, the board and the entire community, is proud of them. We have a thing in Strongsville and our schools called the Model Mustang, and this is three excellent examples of what a Model Mustang is. Not just accomplishments in sports, but accomplishments in academics also. And it always makes me happy to see these examples, because there's going to be younger Mustangs that are seeing the same thing. And they now know that they can do great things in golf, great things running, which I now know is more complicated than just putting on tennis shoes, and great, great things in any of our sports activities. So congratulations again. And at this point on our agenda, we're going to move to another exciting part of our agenda, which is treasurer's report. But we'll take a quick pause if anyone perhaps has Christmas shopping or something else they'd like to do. But thank you for your attendance and...
George, I see that nobody left, so they all want to be part of your exciting treasurer's report.
Those that have to be here are still here. Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration tonight. The first being a student activity program budget revision. This is for the Whitney Media Center Student Activity account. It's increasing their budget from $500 to $1,678, and the increase is due to the cash that they have in the account. And they're looking to buy books that were lost or damaged, and that's where the funds are coming from. Item B is amending the permanent appropriation measure to reflect the change in the Whitney Media account, and that is the only change to the appropriation measure, and that can be found in Exhibit B. And the last item that I have is Item C, which will require super vote. It's a resolution approving a settlement agreement with Westbridge Properties LLC. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer, that a resolution approving a settlement agreement with Wedgebridge Properties LLC be approved as described in Exhibit C.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hauser, and second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? So I will say that during our legislative update, we will talk about House Bill...
126.
126, thank you. And you know, these resolutions are going to be challenged by that House bill. So it's a timely, a timely example of what's going on locally, along with what potentially will be happening in Columbus. Any other questions or discussion?
And just to give an example of what this is, this is a commercial plaza here in Strongsville on Pearl Road that was sold in 2018 for $600,000. The county value is at $453,000, and the settlement agreement is to pay the increase in tax of about $2,500 for tax years 18, 19, and 20, for a total of $7,500 for the increased value.
Any other questions? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mrs. Hauser?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Saweet?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next on our agenda, superintendent's report. Dr. Reiba.
Thanks again, Mr. Miko. We have a presentation and a public hearing, so I'm going to ask our presenters for the school calendars to come up while I kind of give an intro. So in front of you, board members, you should have two calendars at the top in the green header. It will dictate if it's the 2223 or 2324 calendar. And so if you could have those out in front of you. And I'm pleased to introduce Ms. Krista Heckman, who was a parent representative on our calendar committee. And we all know Mr. Bill Wengler, High School Principal, who was an administrative representative on our calendar committee. And tonight, what they're going to do is go through some highlights of the process, and then I'll take the end of it and kind of talk about next steps. So there's a clicker in front of you, and the slides are up whenever you're ready.
I'm sure you have one.
The right clicker. There you go.
Your other right. There we go. Good evening. As Dr. Reiba said, I'm Krista Heckman. I'm a local parent here in Strongsville. I have a one, first grader rather, at Kinsner Elementary, and three-year-old twins as well. I'm also the president of the PTA at Kinsner Elementary. And I did serve as one of the... I'm also the president of the PTA at Kinsner Elementary, and I did serve as one of the parent representatives on the calendar committee. Our committee membership was made up of one facilitator, which was, of course, Dr. Raiba, three administrators, one of which was Mrs. Pelco, Assistant Superintendent, three teachers, three support staff, and three parents, of which I was one. We got together over the course of two meetings in November and December to come up with proposed calendars that we're going to share with you tonight. Some of the considerations are listed here that we were looking to as we came up with the calendars. First of all, day requirements. We had a maximum of one-hundred-and-eighty student days, one convocation day for the instructors prior to the start of school, two professional development days, one record/PD day at the end of the first semester, four parent-teacher conference evenings, two in the fall, two in the spring, and we were also looking to stagger those to make sure that parents with children in multiple schools would be able to attend accordingly, and two conference comp days for the, to compensate for the parent-teacher conferences. Other calendar considerations, of course, any asynchronous days that might happen for PD purposes in order to keep our student counts up, our student days up high enough, and then also feedback received from the staff surveys that we took into account. Other guidelines, excluding Thanksgiving week, which is always going to be short, we did our absolute best to have all school weeks be a minimum of three days, with the prevailing thought being that anything shorter was just a bit too chaotic and the students weren't entirely focused on learning. Historically, we've ended the first semester and held Strongsville High School midterms prior to winter break for the past four years. That way, the midterms aren't hanging over their head as they're trying to enjoy their winter break. All Polaris districts, of which, of course, we are one, have agreed to have spring break the week after Good Friday, so those were already scheduled for us and set in stone. And then our overarching goal was to have forty-five days per quarter for the upper grades, sixty days per trimester for the lower grades, and ninety days per semester. Okay. So what we did, we had three work groups that met independently in the same room, but independently at separate caucuses, and developed draft twenty-two, twenty-three calendars based upon all of the parameters that we've already gone over. We gained feedback from all of the representative groups to try to meet everybody's needs as best as possible, and then we got back together and came to a consensus as a full committee on the draft twenty-two, twenty-three calendar, and then the twenty-three and twenty-four calendars sort of fell from that.
Thanks, Krista. It was easy to collaborate with Krista, she lives two doors down from me. Easiest way to get together with someone outside of work ever. So looking at the days, being specific, I'm going to look at twenty-two, twenty-three first, just kind of work through the schedule. Start off with the two PD days on August fifteenth and sixteenth. I just want to note that we did change, convocation will be first. I think last year, that was different. I think we all felt that the convocation was very, is very inspirational. Staff morale is extremely high, is a lot of positivity, so to have that day in the very beginning when everyone's coming back and kind of inject some energy into the day leading into the PD day, so on both of the calendars, I'll reference there, that is a change from last year. Moving from there, we have the conference nights, which are a little bit different. Based on surveys, staff surveys, and what each building wanted, the high school and the elementary schools have two different days of conferences. For example, the high schools is on the twenty-ninth of September, and then the second day is on, hold on, my eyes are getting so bad, I think I need stronger glasses here. It looks like on the fifth. Same thing, the elementaries are the same thing. They're like on a Wednesday, on a Thursday. The middle school at all the conference nights are back-to-back. There's two nights in a row per that building's request. That's, that's what the staff surveys indicated. We have an asynchronous day on Election Day. That, again, that'll be both days, which seems to be logical in terms of, both years you'll see that. It's an obvious day with the traffic in the, in the building to have an asynchronous day. Thanksgiving break remains as normal for everyone. Twenty-two, twenty-three, the winter break is, follows our pattern that we're in right now, the last day. The only difference being this year, we're ending on a Friday. Students are ending on a Thursday. Staff reports for a half-PD day and records day on the Friday. We did shift that to Monday because we didn't feel, based on feedback, that the district parents would, would be very happy returning on January second, the day after New Year's. Do we seem like that would not be a good day to ask everyone to come back and at least be awake in class, right? And then moving into conferences in the winter, same concept. We staggered the conferences for the high school. We staggered the conferences for elementary per building request. We also, the middle school has back-to-back, but, but if you look at all of the conference days, there's never a day which both middle school days align with like both, both high school days. There's an opportunity for parents, I have a friend who has children in elementary, middle, and high school right now, they can make all of their conferences without missing anyone's conference. Going into, there's an asynchronous day also in February, which we placed both, for both years you'll see, we placed asynchronous days in the winter. As we know, in Ohio, winters can be kind of long. That's a good day to inject professional development for our teachers, a good day to pick them up and, and give them support right before testing. Spring break, leading into spring break, the spring breaks are, they're aligned to Polaris. All of the schools that go to Polaris have the same spring break, which I know historically was not the case, and the issue with that, obviously, if you're a student that goes to Polaris, you don't get a spring break. So both calendars, they will be aligned with Polaris. Next year's is a little closer, this year, I know this year's is really late, but next year's is definitely closer, and then that feeds into May, and last student day is, again, like we've been doing recently, is Friday, the twenty-sixth into, into graduation, which is on a Sunday. For twenty-three, twenty-four, I won't go through every date the exact same way I did, but I do want to note, one of the big differences in twenty-three, twenty-four is the winter break, so with, with, as it, as the days shift and it recedes, if we let out on the fifteenth, we would then be running into a situation where we could not come back, obviously, on Monday, January first, or the second would be difficult as well. So what we did there to accommodate everybody's desires, A, the community wants two weeks of, two weeks in a row off, that, that was loud and clear in the feedback, staff, same thing, and, and we came close, they've thirteen. But to accommodate the midterms at the high school, we were going to go with the eighteenth and nineteenth and twenty that week, and extend the break into, through the third of January, which would keep us at our normal number of days for break, but it would also academically accommodate the needs of, of the, of the high school and the rest of the district. Beyond that, the rest of twenty-three, twenty-four is almost identical to what I described twenty-two, twenty-three. Conferences are set up the same way, same number of asynchronous days, one in the Election Day, one in February. School year ends right around Memorial Day, graduation that Sunday.
So before I continue on, kind of with the procedural aspects, any questions for me or Krista or Bill in terms of what was selected, the decisions of the committee, any feedback questions you may have?
Yeah, I have two questions. When we're looking at February and March in both cases, I'm just curious how you decided that February would be an asynchronous day on the, like, the seventeenth, for example, in the twenty-two, twenty-three, and the March day is just plain off? Just how did you decide which was which there? It's that way this year as well, but I'm just curious about the logic.
Yeah, I, I believe, there's a lot of conversation around that. I believe a large part of it is that the off day in March made sense, because I think it extends for a long weekend, and there is, there is no time off. March is the one day, really, there's nothing in March, and, you know, not that it's not sunny in Cleveland in March, but it's definitely a long month, and I think the thought was, and, and from my perspective selfishly as the high school principal, having the PD be earlier in the year is beneficial for us in terms of testing, in terms of getting prepared for that fourth quarter. So I think strategically putting that, that asynchronous day where we could use it more. And then in terms of fatigue, an asynchronous day, if it's surrounded by some type of professional development in March, it's late in the year, so in, in terms of getting as much as we can out of that PD, it allows us to kind of focus, again, and I'm so, I'm a testing nut, so I get crazy about the testing dates, it allows us to really get ready and, and build up before the testing.
Thank you, that makes sense. The only other question I have is, I can't see it here at the moment, but on the side of both calendars, there's a description that says teacher days and student days at the top. Twenty-two, twenty-three says one-eighty-four teacher days, one-seventy-eight student days.
I believe it's a typo.
Okay.
They should be, they should be reversed. They just got trimmed out.
In both cases, it's one-eighty-four, one-seventy-eight.
Correct, correct. Yeah, that's just a typo.
That, that eliminates the other part of my question then, thank you.
No problem. Trying to figure out who's going to watch the show.
Fixed.
It looks great up there. We, we heard that we were going to have a day with just kids, and the school board was going to come in and run the show.
I'm like picturing all of this. I think we tried that once before.
I think it'd be an interesting experiment.
I think we did that already.
I, I do want to see you serve twelve-hundred lunches without any help. That would be fun.
Any other questions for Bill or Krista?
I do want to just thank, thank both of you and the entire committee. You know, sometimes if you just take a quick glance at something, you think it's just simple and straightforward, like setting up a calendar or whatever, but you really do have to go through it, and it's, you know, every time I've gotten and paid attention, it seems like, well, if we do this over here, and then all of a sudden, you're unbalancing something else. So it does take a little bit of effort, or not a little bit, it takes a lot of effort, and it's good to have all of the different inputs to make sure that we don't just have one point of view. So thank you, and thank you to the staff, or the committee.
Thank you. So just kind of in terms of procedurally, a handful of years ago, there was a law passed. We have a board policy that says, in adopting a school calendar, we have to have a hearing, which is today, and then once we have that hearing, we have to wait thirty days. So in my parent update on Monday, and staff update, I'll share the draft calendars, and, and we'll be in that thirty-day waiting period. Part of what it says in, in the presentation that Bill and Krista just did is that we've got to talk about the total, or, or we've got to talk also about the total number of hours in a school year and the length of the school day. So what I want to share about that is there's no changes to the last four years that we've had. We're going to have the same amount of hours in the school year, the length of the school day is going to be the same. They've talked about the beginning and end dates for instruction, so no changes there. We're just kind of in that thirty-day waiting period. So that means the board can kind of think and reflect, and as well as parents or staff can offer feedback prior to approval. So kind of next steps and additional considerations, the law also says that if you're going to make a change in hours or days, we've got to consider compatibility with other schools in the, in the area, so that would be Albert Einstein or Polaris, or parochial schools in the area, but since we're not changing anything, there's no official notice that we have to, to make there. And then again, you have the option to recommend no changes to what we've provided, or if you have feedback, you can send it back to the committee for a possible revision. If we need to talk about it, if not, sometimes we've emailed the committee and gotten, you know, electronic consensus if there's any changes. With thirty days, we haven't set the twenty-twenty-two board calendar yet, but based on where our organizational meeting will be for the board and for our families, it won't be approved until the second January meeting. Any further questions on the calendar?
The only comment is, is we'll make sure it's on our website, and, you know, we sincerely hope that parents that are interested, or community members that are interested, download them, review them, and if we missed something, let us know.
Next, I'd like to ask Mr. Mike Caldwell to come up to the podium. Mike is a member of our Board Facilities Development Committee, and he has a presentation on behalf of the committee that he would like to share with the board, and as you look around, we have a handful of other committee members that are with us tonight to provide support. So Mike?
Thank you, Dr. Raiba, and thank you, board, for, for the time. So as Dr. Raiba said, I'm representing the facilities committee, and I wanted to reiterate, first off, our purpose, and we are tasked with maintaining the strategic plan and recommendations for capital improvement of the district buildings and facilities with a focus on fiscal responsibility and transparency. Our meetings are open to the public, they occur on a quarterly basis, and the details for those meetings are on the website. And so the purpose of presenting this evening is a recommendation to the board to engage a vendor cooperative strategies to complete enrollment, projection, and subdivision yield analysis. That is a ten-week study at a cost of twenty-two-thousand dollars plus expenses. We commissioned a similar study in two thousand and eight in preparation for the middle school construction project. That study was quite valuable. It served the needs at the time, and the projections proved to be very accurate, and so at this point, we need to refresh that data and our projections for the next ten And the reason for the recommendation and for the study is to address some of the challenges that we have with some of our buildings in the district, specifically with the elementary buildings. So the cost of the capital improvement plan for those buildings is no longer fiscally responsible. Several of those buildings, Chapman, Maraski, Sarar, Whitney, and Zellers, this building, were built more than fifty years ago, and the cost of updating those buildings and continuing to maintain those buildings and to meet current code and requirements is approaching the cost of just brand-new facilities. And so as, as starting this analysis, the committee is starting to process, starting the process to investigate a comprehensive building project to replace those buildings. And as part of this analysis, we evaluated a couple different vendors that could perform this kind of study, and the group unanimously selected cooperative strategies to perform that demographic study and estimate that future district enrollment and our capacity needs. And so as Dr. Raiba said, we have several facility committee members here this evening, so I'd like to thank those committee members, Mr. Carbone, Mr. Burdick, and Mrs. Mail, but wanted to recognize the committee for, for their work in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board in terms of, just as a point of clarity, the cooperative strategies proposal, because of the amount of money it is, it's less than twenty-five-thousand dollars, which means that doesn't come to the board for approval by policy. George and I have the authority to approve those contracts. So we did want to bring it to you, obviously, because it's a big deal, and it's a, it's a big first step in terms of looking at our, our future elementary facility needs, but wanted to see if you had any questions for, for Mike or the committee members, or, you know, the board members that sit on that committee, or me as well.
Did any, Laura and Sherry, did you have any comments you wanted to share from the, from the meeting?
Just that they compared two different companies, and I'm very comfortable with the company that they picked. It does a more thorough study, and it suits the needs of what Dr. Raiba is looking for in moving forward with our district, so I'm very comfortable with their recommendation.
Same, yeah, yeah. It was only the two, and I forget, what was the difference between the other one that was more extensive on, what piece of it?
Well, the way the, both of the, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, but the way both of the proposals are broken up is you can kind of look at these in phases, right? You can pick different aspects, but, but what the committee liked, and we talked about, is it could, take a look at projections through housing turnover, right? Do you want to talk a little bit about that, or is that pretty much it?
No, I think you, you hit on it. So I think part of the reasons we selected this vendor, they are a national vendor, they have been used for local projects within Ohio and neighboring districts. We felt like their, their breadth of experience was something that was a differentiator with the other vendor, and yes, part of it was a subdivision analysis that would look at new housing builds and project that as part of the population, so we'd have an accurate estimate of the, the capacity that we needed to support within the district.
Yeah, I think the key aspect for us moving forward is, you know, we're, we're going to have some new building, but we all know space is limited in the city for new development, but what we're seeing is the school district, you know, we, we saw enrollment increases of twenty-five to forty students a year. This past year, I think it was like a hundred to one-hundred-and-fifty kids, and we're seeing a greater increase each year, and what we're seeing is, obviously, we have less building, but we have more senior families that may be downsizing or going into assisted living, and, and families with children moving in, and that's difficult to predict, right? It's difficult to predict how quickly is that going to turn over, and what areas are we going to see quicker turnover that could bring more students to our school district, and this study really pinpointed on that aspect of it, which I think is going to be vital for a community such as Strongsville.
So I know I was at two meetings before, and, and we did quite a bit of discussion, so I'm very comfortable with the recommendation, and as a board, we previously set our goals, and this fits very well with our overall board-level goals. We do need to start that process of planning for the elementary schools, and this is, this is the first step or an initial step, and I think it's important... And I think it's important that we have information that we can rely on to make sure that we don't build too much elementary capacity, which would be a mistake, but at the same time, we need to be certain we don't build too little. And it's not an exact science, but we should be able to get reasonably close and be able to plan for the future of our district and our city. And this will go a long way to getting that process started. So I wanted to compliment Mike on the report and compliment the entire committee and thank them for their work. I will say, earlier today, we had a memorial for a former board member, George Grozan. And the Board Facility Development Committee was his baby. His vision to make sure that our buildings were taken care of and were planned. And I remember, you know, so many years ago, talking about this, these very next steps. So I did want to thank the committee, and you have big shoes to fill, as we all know. But the nice part of it is, is that George's style, he brought you in. And it's a challenge, but it's a challenge that you know by virtue of George bringing you in, you're going to do fine, and it'll be a lot of fun along the way. So thanks for the work, Mike, and we look forward to getting this information.
Great, thank you, Mike. Before we move on for this topic, I just want to kind of close the discussion a little bit, because you talk about an enrollment study for possible new elementary schools. That spurs like 1,000 questions right away, right? So what I want to be clear, this is the first step. We can't take a look at an elementary construction project without first knowing, how many kids do we project to be there? So, the Board Facilities Development Committee is meeting. They're starting to look at timelines as to when that possibly would happen, now that this step is going on. There's also, if you take a look at neighboring communities, there's been a lot of different changes in how we build elementary schools, right? Are mega schools, or grade-banded schools, or stick with the neighborhood schools. So there will be a lengthy community engagement process in terms of getting feedback and determining how many elementary schools, where will they be, what will be the structure of those elementary schools. So I just ask everybody, whether it's anxiety or excitement with the start of this topic, that we understand that this is the first step, let's get meaningful data. And then, for those that want to be engaged as a part of the process, there will be plenty of opportunities to be engaged and have your voices heard in terms of what the future of our school district at the elementary level will look like. So, appreciate working with the Board Facilities Committee over these years and look forward to a lot of new work that's going to get started here shortly. With that, I'll move on to Business Services. We do have a couple items under that agenda. First of all, for your consideration is a lease agreement between the school district and Strongsville Lacrosse. The board hereby leases the Strongsville Lacrosse Association, or to the Strongsville Lacrosse Association, and the SLA leases from the board, properly formerly known as Allen Elementary School. The lease is for the term and rental amount set forth in the exhibit and is subject to the provisions contained in the lease. The lease includes all of the green space, fields, and parking lots known as the premises, and that can be found in Exhibit D.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski, any discussion?
Would you like me to give a little background, or?
We're going to play lacrosse, how awesome is that? Go ahead.
So we've, Allen Elementary, since, for a long time, has been leased to the city. The city's been able to utilize it for rec fields, and they've taken care of property management, mowing the grass for us. Over the recent years, they have not needed to use that. And Strongsville Lacrosse is growing, and they were looking for additional fields. We already lease the part of the Albion property to them. So we had a meeting with the city in Strongsville Lacrosse, and after a few months of discussion and finalization, that will be, they want that to be their home. So, the way this works in the lease agreement is it can be their home, it's still our property. If they're going to make any improvements or add a shed or storage there, it has to get our approval. And there's a clause in there that should we want the property back at any time, we can cancel the lease with X amount of days' notice. But it's a, and they will continue to take care of the property for us. So, it's a great thing for Strongsville Lacrosse, it's a great thing for our city and our school district as well. So I'm excited to, you know, give them a place to officially call their home.
And I think that's a good way to put it, it's going to be their home. Strongsville Lacrosse continues to grow, it's still, it continues to attract more and more youth to play the game. And so they had been trying to figure out a permanent practice place that everyone knows about, and it'll help them continue to grow, and that helps us too. So I think this is a great, a great result, and I'm looking forward to the partnership. Any other questions or comments? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
And we do have one gift from Shadar and Priyanka that donated $100 to Whitney Elementary School, so thank you for that donation. Under curriculum, the first, we have a revision to the secondary student fees. It's a correction or revision to the May 20, 2021 agenda, as stated there in the secondary fees. We do need to reinstate a $4.50 fee for the Intro to Family Consumer Science VII course. That was suspended due to remote and hybrid schedule last year and needs to be assessed this year, and that can be found in Exhibit E. We do have three, one overnight trip and two out-of-state trips. The first overnight trip is the Strongsville Varsity Wrestling Team, going to Barnesville, Ohio to participate in the Ford Invitational Tournament, December 17th to 18th. The out-of-state trip, we have two ski and snowboard club trips. The first one is Strongsville High School Ski and Snowboard Club, travel to Peak and Peak Ski Resort in Clymer, New York, January 22nd. And then the second is the same club, traveling to Holiday Valley Ski Resort in New York on February 19th. All of these will be paid for by the participating students or fundraising activities, and all of these dates are on non-student school days. Any questions on the curriculum report? All right, we have no items under Student Services, and with that, I'll turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Poco for her report. Jenny?
Thank you, Dr. Riba. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have the retirement of a certificated staff member. Mrs. Becky Pollak, who has been one of our physical education teachers in the district for quite a while now, has elected to retire. I also have an addendum, so I'll continue with the retirements here. Under E1, with the retirement of a non-certificated staff member, we have Robert Hale, who is our AV Communications and IT Field Technician, who's also been with us for quite a while, has also elected to retire. So, we'll recognize them officially in May with everybody else, but just want to wish them the very best, and congratulations to both of them. Under E2, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated substitutes, an appointment for a certificated district substitute, appointments for non-certificated substitutes. Under E3, changes in hours for non-certificated staff. Under E4, continuing contract for a non-certificated staff. Under E5, we have medical leaves for certificated and non-certificated staff. Under E6, volunteers for several chaperones. And finally, under E7, we have a memorandum of understanding, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted, and this does require a separate vote.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski, do we have any discussion? We thank the association for their collaboration and their partnership, and we look forward to continuing our good work. George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
We have no technology report for this month, so that concludes my report.
Next on our agenda is report on Polaris, Mrs. Bissell.
Yes, we still have not met since the last report. Our December meeting is next week, where we'll celebrate the holidays together and get to do some of the more normal things we missed out on last year, so I'm looking forward to that. But in the meantime, I want to highlight three more student ambassadors that are representing us well at Polaris. Mia Davis is in the Criminal Justice Program there, and she says that the thing she likes most about Polaris is the environment, where, and the teachers and the friends she makes. So, everything about the program is she's enjoying. The second student is Rodrick Miller, and he's in the ENT and Fire Program. And he says he loves the new experiences he gets every day, along with the new skills. And then finally, Leanne Hawk is in the Aeronautics Program, and she says she loves the technology, and they do have some really awesome technology there, including some drones and some like flight simulators, which are really cool. So, congratulations to these three students, and we thank you for representing us well at Polaris. That concludes my report.
And just as a piggyback on that report, we do know Leanne very well, and she is in the Aeronautics Program, and she is not only doing the drones and that portion of the program, but she's learning how to fly and recently did her first solo flight, which is about as cool as you possibly can get. So we congratulate Mia, Rodrick, and Leanne. Next is report on legislation.
Do you have anything, Sherry?
No, there's nothing going on.
It is the holiday season. I will, I will take the opportunity to remind the public that we're following HB 126, which will change, potentially will change, boards of education and other public entities' ability to challenge property values. And, you know, ultimately, from Strongsville's perspective, it would be detrimental to our district if it passes in the current amended form. As we discussed earlier, the settlement agreement is something that's legal now, potentially would not be legal, and ultimately would be detrimental to the district. So if anybody needs to write an email, is desperate to write an email, they can write one to Representative Patton or Senator Dolan to advocate that boards of education have the ability to continue to champion the public's interest. Do you want to add anything else, George, or?
No, I think you touched on where the bill currently sits now. Say, the last meeting, I went down and testified to the Senate Ways and Means Committee, who had the bill. It was changed as it currently sits now. It's, as was originally proposed, school boards couldn't file any counter complaints or initiate any complaints where it passed in the Senate Ways and Means Committee. School districts can file counter complaints, but they can't file, they can't initiate, and when you file a counter complaint, it must go through board resolution first by individual property. And it passed 5-2 in the Senate Ways and Means Committee, and now it's waiting to go to the full Senate. And then, if, once it goes to the full Senate, it goes back to the House for concurrents vote. And then, if the House approves it, it would go to the governor, who could have the opportunity to veto it. I believe he did veto it in the past, or it failed in the House. This is the third time that this legislation has been proposed, and it hasn't been approved the prior two years, but they're trying again this time. So, we'll see where it goes. We've advocated with Senator Dolan, we've advocated with Representative Patton. So, hopefully, the current legislation remains in effect, but right now, it's on hold. They could convene next week, and there could be action on it as early as next week.
So like I said, if the community would send an email to Representative Patton or Senator Dolan saying no to HB 126, we would appreciate it. Board liaison reports, shall we begin with City Council?
Yes, City Council met this past Monday evening, and they started by recognizing the Strongsville Police Department as the Department of the Month by the Ohio Association of Chief of Police. So, congratulations to our police department. A few of our council people, led by Councilwoman Kelly Kosik, in conjunction with a few school board members, held an event December 4th at the Rec Center for a little girl here in Strongsville who needs a bone marrow transplant. The goal is to help her find a match. Approximately 30 individuals came out to participate. If you couldn't make it and are interested in seeing if you are a match, you can go to bethematch.org for more information. City Hall will be closed December 23rd and December 30th to observe the Christmas holiday. They will be open half-days on the 23rd and 29th. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Laura. Strongsville Education Foundation did meet this morning, and they continue their good work. And the raffle, the football raffle, tickets are $25 a ticket, or you can get five chances for $100, and that's on their website to purchase the tickets. And I think the deadline is December 15th, so get them while they're hot.
And I would also add, there's another fundraiser that they're doing. It's been on social media, and I think elementary students will have it sent home, if not this week, next week. But they have a partnership with Sergeant Clean's Car Wash, that if you donate five, you have to go to a specific website, but if you go to the Sergeant Clean website, I think it's like backslash S E F, you donate $5. All of those proceeds come to the Education Foundation, which goes to educator grants and student scholarships, and you get a 60-day unlimited free car wash pack from Sergeant Clean. So for a $5 donation, you get two months for free.
Yep, and just in time for Sergeant Clean's new opening across from St. James.
So it's a great deal, and helps our kids.
PTA Council?
Probably me, and, you know, I wasn't able to go, and I don't have many.
So I was able to attend. It was their holiday luncheon, they had their meeting first, and then their holiday luncheon after, where a lot of our administrators were able to be there. So it was a really good time, we missed you, Sherry. But a big topic was the grants that our grant committee just met. They had approximately $14,000 in requests, and their budget was $5,000. So they received 23 requests, and they were able to spread that $5,000 amongst 14 of those 23 requests, which I think that's pretty outstanding. And just to mention a few of them, our preschool was able to get a grant for out-of-the-world tasting stations, where children will be able to taste, touch, and explore a variety of dried space foods and compare them to their earth-friendly counterparts. One of our elementary buildings was granted a CSI virtual field trip to the Cleveland Aquarium, reinforcing science standards of animal habitats and adaptations. And our high school was granted a 3D pen set for Makerspace, so that they can create items while learning how to take an object from 2D to 3D. So that's just touching on how they were able to help each level of our buildings. And I want to thank them for all their hard work. And just a reminder, Founder's Day is February 3rd at our middle school at 7:00 p.m. That concludes your report.
Thank you, Laura. I don't think we have any other reports?
No.
Board Committee reports, Finance Committee is, next meeting is to be announced. Policy Committee meeting, next meeting is to be announced. Facilities Committee, their next meeting is next year, February 17th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m. here in the Admin Building. And then, Business Advisory Committee has a meeting tomorrow morning at 7:30 a.m. And I know Laura and John will be excited. Any other committee reports? Hearing none on our agenda, we come to the Consent Calendar. An action by the Board of Education, and adoption of the Consent Calendar means that all items appearing on the agenda with asterisks are adopted by one single motion, unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski, any discussion? We do have the addendum, and I feel like we should do an auction whether we should accept Mr. Hale's retirement. But we congratulate all of them on their retirement and look forward to recognizing them in May. Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next is Superintendent's timely information, Dr. Riba.
Just a reminder of our upcoming concerts again. As you can see, we've got a concert tomorrow during the day, and then, all next week, Monday through Thursday, there's different concerts across the district. I did want to share with the board, I was able to stop in at the middle school band concert on Tuesday. And one of the things that we were able to do is we were able to look at their schedule, and they created a new class this year that was just for new band students that started in sixth grade instead of fifth grade. I can't tell you how many were there, but the stage was full. I can't tell you how many were there, but the stage was full. So that's awesome to hear, that, you know, pandemic starting an instrument that was, you know, maybe a little tough for families to see, the number of students, and that class really helped support them, uh, in, in that level. Uh, and then, uh, the other thing, Mrs. Roble, I wanted to share what she shared on stage, just a thanks, uh, to the board. Uh, we made a change and utilized our ESSER funds to go from every other day of instrumental music, uh, whether it be strings or orchestra or choir, uh, to every day, and what a significant impact that's made, and you could tell it by how the students played and sounded. So a phenomenal concert there. Uh, we've got, uh, as you could see, we've got a, a few other concerts left at the elementary level, middle school, and high school, so please check them out, or you can livestream them on S C S T V. Um, and, uh, some dates to remember, uh, the Solo Academy, uh, enrollment for the second semester, we've been putting that out over the last couple weeks. Tomorrow is the deadline, um, and so we've been, uh, you know, parents that want to enroll or parents that want to come back in person, uh, were, are, are to notify us, uh, by tomorrow. So rough numbers are, there's not going to be significant changes in enrollment, well, we're still tabulating those, but it's kind of, uh, the number of students that wanted to come back, we had this, uh, equal number of students that wanted to go in. So at the secondary level, if memory serves, we maybe had thirteen students coming back and maybe ten, um, wanting to go to Solo Academy and, uh, a similar idea for the elementary level. Um, and then as, as, as Bill talked about with the calendar, uh, for this year, uh, Thursday is the last student day, Friday is a professional day for our, uh, staff, uh, and then winter break, uh, and we all return on Monday, January 3rd.
If I may, there was a very last-minute change this afternoon. There's no longer a sixth-grade orchestra concert on Monday. It's gonna be, um, recorded virtually on Wednesday and sent home to parents that way.
Thank you for sharing. Yeah.
There will be, uh, the, the moments Roger just sent out was, they'll perform during first and ninth period on Wednesday, 12:15 at the School Day on CMS Stage. The performances will be recorded and shared with families.
Thanks, George. Thanks, Michelle. And that concludes timely information.
Board of Education, other. Uh, first up, uh, discussion of our, uh, 2022 Board of Education meeting dates. Uh, we have the draft. As we discussed before, uh, we're going to move our dates, uh, to the second and fourth Thursday of the month, except for the first meeting of the year, which will remain, uh, that first Thursday, January 6th. So unless there's any other discussion or questions, uh, we will adopt this calendar at our first meeting in January. Uh, a few things that we need to think about is, uh, we have that annual Board Retreat, and making sure that, uh, we want to keep that date and that that works. And then, uh, if I can ask Michelle to, uh, liaison with Polaris, but, uh, now's the time to pick a date, uh, on the calendar, and instead of having the meeting at the Admin Building, we would have it at, uh, Polaris, and they would host us. And then, uh, we'll probably have a meeting, uh, that we'll either adopt in January or schedule as a special meeting, um, as a, uh, early retreat for the Board and the administration. Uh, so think about your calendars for the January or February timeframe.
Hi, is, and we're gonna take Thanksgiving off of the calendar?
I think that's up for debate.
I'm in.
If we have it at Polaris, I think we can get a really nice meal.
Yeah, I'll tell Bob that, uh, on Tuesday.
I'm sure that'll go over real well. So, yeah, so we'll have to take a look at that also.
So just procedurally, um, at the January meeting, we'll have it on there for a discussion item, since it won't be finalized, and you guys could just make a vote from the floor.
Okay. Correct. Any other questions? Uh, we have some, uh, Board Member Professional Development expenses. Uh, the first one is for Michelle, for, um, the Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference, and, uh, we have a partnership there where Polaris is picking up half your fees, uh, because of your duties, uh, to them, and then we pick up the other half. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Next, uh, the same, uh, reimbursable expenses for the, uh, School Board Capital Conference for Mrs. Buckner Sully. Thank you again. Uh, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Abstain.
And the motion carries, and the last reimbursable expenses are for the Ohio School Board Association Capital Conference for Mrs. Hausum. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Bissell, caught me off guard. Second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? I will, uh, compliment everyone on, uh, taking their responsibility seriously. I know you now know how fun and exciting Capital Conference is. Hearing no other discussion, please take the roll.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Abstain.
And Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Uh, we do need to set our organizational meeting date, uh, which is, uh, we said January 6th at 7:00 PM, uh, in this room, the Admin Building. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mr. Kropinski. Any discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Oh, yeah, it wasn't done yet.
I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, Srar was having their toboggan night that night, so I think I'd rather be there. Oh, let's do our meeting.
I think you can do both.
Can I wear my boots?
You.
No, I'm kidding. January 6th, good, thank you. Yeah, oh, yeah.
Hearing no other discussion, would you please take the roll?
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Uh, next is an appointment of President pro tempore for the 2022 Organizational Work Session Meeting. I would like to nominate Mrs. Hausum. Do we have a motion?
Richard, we don't need a motion or second, we can just do nominations.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none?
Take the roll.
Take the roll.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Sully?
Yes.
Mr. Kropinski?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Congratulations. Laura did a great job last year, and I know we all look forward to, to her doing a great job next year. Uh, so at this point, uh, before we get to, uh, executive session, I just did want to take a, a moment, uh, on behalf of the school, on behalf of the School Board and the administration. Uh, today was a memorial for a former school, school board member, George Groszan. Uh, many of you may have seen the article in, uh, Cleveland.com. The, the, uh, commitment and the, uh, the legacy that George left, uh, for our school district will be felt by many for generations to come, um, and it's, uh, important that we, uh, recognize that. I did want to share, uh, just a quick story. As many of you know, uh, the, uh, new middle school and the, uh, upgrades to the high school, uh, were his baby. I mean, his, his life, blood, his sweat, his tears were all involved in that. And we all talk about how, uh, you know, we joke, but it's serious. He checked every tuck and mortar point on that building, and I don't know what a tuck or mortar point is, but I know he checked each and every one of them. But the way he did these things, uh, he, you know, we like to say he did it the right way. It didn't just start with the construction. Uh, before, before the first shovel was, was even dug, he was looking at the plans. And I know this because, uh, when the, uh, architect plans were being drawn up, he had not one copy made, he had two copies made, and he came knocking on my door, and he gave me my copy of the, uh, the architector, architecture plans, and they're a good two inches thick. And, uh, Mike knows what I'm talking about.